I'd like to welcome everybody to the next meeting. Do a roll call, please.
Charles Cooper.
Here.
Becky Duncan.
Here.
Jeanne Ledbetter.
Here.
Vanessa Matthews.
Here.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Here.
All present.
Alright, next is approval of January's 2019 minutes.
Regular meeting, January 2019. Be it remembered that the Board of Mayor and Aldermen met in regular monthly session Monday, January 14th, 2019, at 6:00 PM at City Hall in Jamestown, Tennessee, when the following proceedings were had and entered of record to lit. Present and presiding, Honorable Lyndon Baines, Mayor, Gail Dishman, City Recorder, and on a roll call by the City Recorder, the following members of the Board were present: Charles Cooper, Becky Duncan, Jeanne Ledbetter, Vanessa Matthews, and Elizabeth Pendergrass. Mayor Baines called the meeting to order and welcomed everyone for attending. The minutes from the previous meeting were read and on a motion by Charles Cooper seconded by Vanessa Matthews, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved the minutes for December 2018. Mayor Baines then asked were there grievances, were there citizens with grievances or any other business, and there was none. Mayor Baines then gave an update on city projects. He stated the sewer project downtown would be completed by the end of the month. Then he stated that the Highway 127 project would be discussed in an upcoming RPO meeting and would report updates after the meeting, and that he would also be hearing back from the FAA about the runway project sometime in mid-February depending on the government shutdown. Tom Bennett with Bennett Associates then gave the engineer report. Bob Lane, City Building Inspector, gave the building and codes report. Bailey Alred, City Attorney, then gave the attorney's update. On a motion by Becky Duncan, seconded by Elizabeth Pendergrass, the Board on a roll call vote, all four and none against, approved for RFQs to be requested for building inspector, city code enforcer. On a motion by Jeanne Ledbetter, seconded by Elizabeth Pendergrass, the Board on a roll call vote, all four and none against, approved RFQs to be requested for city judge. RFQs for city attorney failed to a lack of emotion. On a motion by Vanessa Matthews, seconded by Jeanne Ledbetter, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved on first written Ordinance 1830, amendment specifications for installation of natural gas service. On a motion by Jeanne Ledbetter, seconded by Becky Duncan, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved to advertise for the open position at the sewer plant. After some discussion, on a motion by Elizabeth Pendergrass, seconded by Charles Cooper, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved for Brittany Winningham to be hired to the full-time position of city clerk, court clerk, with the understanding that since Ms. Winningham is related to City Reporter Gail Dishman, that Mayor Baines would be her direct supervisor, and that the City Recorder Gail Dishman and internal auditor Carolyn Powell had in place internal controls to protect the city, Ms. Dishman and Ms. Winningham from, Ms. Dishman and Ms. Winningham, from the time she was hired as part-time city clerk in November of '18. On a motion by Jeanne Ledbetter, seconded by Becky Duncan, the Board on a roll call vote, voting to approve, for voting to approve, Charles Cooper, Becky Duncan, Elizabeth Pendergrass, and Jeanne Ledbetter, and one voting against, Vanessa Matthews, passed to hire Nancy Wallace as part-time city clerk. On a motion by Charles Cooper, seconded by Becky Duncan, the Board on a roll call vote, for voting to approve, Charles Cooper, Becky Duncan, Elizabeth Pendergrass, and Jeanne Ledbetter, and one voting against, Vanessa Matthews, a passed Resolution 930 authorizing the application for CDVG sewer grants funds from the Tennessee Department of Economic and Community Development to address sewer system needs. On a motion by Jeanne Ledbetter, seconded by Elizabeth Pendergrass, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved November bills for $458,325.10. On a motion by Jeanne Ledbetter, seconded by Elizabeth Pendergrass, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved December's bills, $498,959.79. On a motion by Elizabeth Pendergrass, seconded by Jeanne Ledbetter, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved November's financial statements. On a motion by Elizabeth Pendergrass, seconded by Becky Duncan, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved December's financial statements. With no further business, on a motion by Becky Duncan, seconded by Jeanne Ledbetter, the Board will adjourn.
Do we have any corrections for the minutes? If not, do I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion made by Ms. Matthews. Seconded by Mr. Cooper. Roll call vote, please.
Charles Cooper.
Here.
Becky Duncan. Four. Jeanne Ledbetter. Four. Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Four.
All four, none against.
Alright, now, is any grievances or any other business to present to the Board? Yep, Ms. Leeann from the Chamber of Commerce.
No, and I don't have a grievance, so it's just some business. Now, as most of you all may know, I can be real loud, I don't need it.
Yeah.
Okay. As most of y'all may know, I am the Executive Director at the Chamber of Commerce. In the Chamber of Commerce, we facilitate the three-star program for the county and the two municipalities here. This is more housekeeping than anything else. We have some new members and some members that are staying on the Board. And I've got this might help you all. I have, if I can, I'll pass these out. Those are the members on our Joint Economic and Community Development Board. That is a requirement of the three-star program. You can look that over, and I'll mention to you the ones that we are getting reappointed and the new one that we have coming on. The new member of our Board, and as you see, those are categorized. We have tried to get a variety from around the county representing different sort of industries, such as tourism, green belt, education, and so on. The new member coming on is Michael Hodge. Michael is a park ranger for Pickett State Park, and he would be serving under the tourism category. His role would be on the Board until December the 31st, 2022. And as you can see, those top ones are reappointments. That would be myself, Leeann Smith, Misty Stevens, Sheriff Michael Reagan, Lindell, Steve Nuttall. And that would be it, and I'm needing approval from you all this evening. I want to mention, just because I'd be remiss if I didn't explain a little bit about the three-star program and the reason why we do what we do with it. Of course, you all apply for grants, community block development grants being one of those. Those are really big-ticket items typically, and your match is pretty generous, I'm sure. This three-star program saves you 4% on your matches for these grants. So we want to continue to be able to save the taxpayers money for certain. Also, we are able to acquire a grant. It's a competitive grant that they bring down annually. This past year, we did receive it, and it's for $15,000. Now, we are facilitating with the assistance of the Upper Cumberland Development District, a strategic, a comprehensive strategic plan for Fintress County, again, including both municipalities. That's something that you all probably be hearing more about, you know, as the months go on, because the development districts will be reaching out to people to basically identify priorities and needs in the community. And I think we all probably point out some things that we'd like to see made better on, and of course, whenever we talk about these plans, the plans are only as good as the people that are behind them. And we want to facilitate a plan that people are able to get behind multiple administrations and collectively move forward and do some good things in our community. That, and, you know, as we have been meeting on this plan, not to draw this out, but some of the priorities that have been discussed has been downtown revitalization. I think we're all interested in that very much. And just an observation that I've made here in the last little bit, probably over the last six months, we've had 10 new businesses come to our downtown. And you can go around town and count them up, and that is excellent. And it's encouraging to me. It should be very encouraging to you. And I hope that you'll get, that we can collectively get together and really try to nurture that environment for our local businesses. That's all I have to say. I would invite you all to, March the 15th, we'll be having a JDCDB meeting. We'll be discussing some goals that we can utilize in this strategic plan, but also for the upcoming three-star program for the year. That'd be March the 15th at 11 o'clock at the upstairs in the Fintress County Courthouse. And I also want to encourage any of y'all, if you've got questions about three-stars, questions about the Chamber of Commerce, questions on how we can help, you know, get together on some programs. You know where to find me. I'm in the old jail there across the street from the courthouse. And without anything else, does anybody have any questions about those appointments on the JDCDB?
Alright, thank you, Ms. Leeann.
I will need, just for confirmation, I'll need for you all to motion and for me to collect the minutes so I can submit them from the state, if that's okay. You all would motion to confirm?
You need us to approve that?
Yeah.
Please go forward. Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve them?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Ms. Ledbetter. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Matthews. Do a roll call, please.
Charles Cooper.
For.
Becky Duncan.
Yes.
Jeanne Ledbetter.
Yes.
Vanessa Matthews.
Yes.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Right.
All four, none against.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Leeann. Alright, next on you again is a report from the Mayor. And like I've said before, we tied for sixth in the National Bestastial Water in Washington DC last week. I'm very proud of the guys at the Water Department and Water Plant. They've done a great job. We go back February 20th to McMinnville to go for the Region IV Bestastial Water. And they do it all over again. Had a great response in Washington, and I really enjoyed it. We, also, the Planning Commission, the City Planning Commission's also talking about working on making downtown a historical district. And like Ms. Leeann said, with all the businesses coming down, if we do make this a historical district and we can get incentives and grants for some of the business downtown, I've been looking into that, and we're going to plan to work on that and see what we can do. T-Dawg will be here Friday to talk about coming to see me, because I'm a very proficient person, that putting sidewalks in, at least from the Westin Cafe to Walmart. Me and Steve Brown is working on getting some wheelchair swings, but it's a city park. We talked to the people at the Health Department about some grants, and they're going to get back with us on that hopefully by the end of the week. Going Nashville tomorrow to, about the airport. Governor Lee has made a very vocal plea about rural airports and working with them. Hopefully, I'll get to talk to him about it. The 127 project, I talked to Representative John Rose in Washington DC. I met with him personally. He is trying to talk the state into making a four-lane divided highway from Crossville to Static, to hook into 111. He thinks that would be the best deal for us and the Upper Cumberland, and I agree with him. And we're going to, he's going to work with it. He said he would be in touch with me later about it. He was very open and very courteous in Washington, has spent his time with us. And I believe that's all I have. So next on here is the City Engineer Report. Mr. Tom, you got anything?
Just a brief report. Tonight, we've finished up the downtown sewer project. Really wrapping up all the final paperwork on it and getting ready to submit over the next week or two on the next lot grant request. So that will be for continued work in the downtown area. And typically what happens is that, those projects are funded in October, excuse me, in October timeframe, and then construction, if you award a grant, will begin next summer. So, very competitive. Jamestown's been very fortunate and has been funded every time you've submitted it since I've been involved since 2009. And so, we're hopeful the program has gotten very, very competitive. It's always been competitive. They changed the scoring criteria this year, so we're not quite sure how that's going to, if that's going to hurt you or help you, but everything is completely submitted. And we'll be working on that over the next week or two. Here anything until probably October timeframe, whether you're funded or not. And that total request was for $648,000. That's kind of where we're at today. And that's a $525,000 grant.
Are you aware yet of anything in the Governor's first action he took where Fintress County has designated us in need of assistance if we're going to get extra money? Quick?
The only thing that I've heard, and Lyndon could probably speak to this better than I can, the first executive order, as I read it, was to really open communications with 10 or 12 stressed counties, however many there were. And so, Lyndon would probably be the first one that would be receiving those communications. I'm not aware of.
I think there were 15 counties, and from what I hear, Fintress County was not in the first. They didn't list maybe seven or eight counties.
Well, I got an email from Nashville, and we are in the...
Fifteen.
The fifteen. But they told us that we would probably begin, what's going to happen first is all the heads of every department, it's in Nashville right now, is going to have to come up with a plan by March the 30th. What they can do to better the Fintress County and the other counties on the list. After that, they're going to come to us and see what they can do for us, what we would like to see done. And then it's all going to go back to Governor Lee. That was what was in my email that I got.
Did you get a list of the counties?
Yes.
The few counties, no, the maybe six counties that they've already chosen to do some things?
Well, they told me, now this is from another person off on the email, but they told me that that really, that list was just, wasn't really set in concrete at this time, that we could be better on the list, so. And so, we have to find out. They have to find out. When they go to talk to all the departments, is that could change. That's what I was told by another person, but that wasn't in the email. So I don't know how much I can go by that, but that was what I was told. So we'll just have to wait and see. But like I say, when I go tomorrow to Nashville, I may see Governor Lee, and I just might push, press the point right there, so.
I think that was in the paper, wasn't it? Was that list in the paper?
I don't think it was, was it? I don't believe it.
I don't know.
I don't believe it.
I think I've read it in the Tennessee, so I'm not sure.
I think we reported the executive order.
Yeah.
It must have passed. I will not certainly.
Maybe it's all luck.
But like I say, tomorrow, if I see Governor Lee, I will ask him about that and see what happens. Any other questions for Tom? Alright, Mr. Bob Lane.
A couple of things. The soup kitchen is, we actually filed an rough in on plumbing. They're getting sheeting off and start finishing that building out inside. And Dave and I's been working on, you know, ordinance or tweaking what we already have on dangerous buildings in Jamestown. We've got to get with the attorney and see if what we're doing will hold water. And then we're going to bring something to the Planning Commission, boards on the fields, and see if we can do something with smaller buildings. We really don't have much law to deal with specifically, like timeframes and all that. We're going to try to tweak that and get that through. That's all I have.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Lane. City Attorney.
As for me this month, I've finished reviewing the policies and procedures. When I met with you guys last week, I told you I was missing, hadn't received a couple of the last two sections, last two chapters. So I have, I've completed those, retyped them, went over them. I do still have, I didn't bring you guys a copy because I do have some questions still that I didn't feel solid enough to even present you with some, with those potential changes. So, all in all, that being said, I feel like we're at a point where we could schedule a meeting within the next month to start to, a work session to really dig into that.
Thank you, Mr. Alred. Now, we move to old business. Approval of Ordinance 1830 on the second and final reading of application installation of natural gas lines. I need a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Ms. Matthews. Any discussion? If not, do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Cooper. Roll call vote, please.
Charles Cooper.
For.
Becky Duncan. Four. Jeanne Ledbetter. Four. Vanessa Matthews. Four. Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Four.
All four, none against.
Number two in old business is discussion on how the Board would like to interview for the Building Inspector and for the City Judge's position. We discussed this in work session, and like I say, it's all completely up to y'all. We talked about having all the Aldermen here and everything, and our City Attorney said it would be best to have a public notice for the interviews. So whatever y'all want to do, make a motion with that.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
I know we said, Dave, we started to do that, and I don't know why you're picking out just the Building Inspector and the Judge and nobody else.
Well, we did pick out, all three of the appointed positions were picked out.
Oh, okay.
Yes, all three were put up.
The last one, we failed on.
On the third, on the City Attorney.
Okay.
That, all three were brought up as on the agenda. Because I want, I did, that's the reason I did all three, because I didn't want anybody to think that I was picking on one person. And that's the way I wanted to be. I don't want, nobody to think I'm picking on one, so. Also, in this discussion, we've talked about moving it to March the 1st for the final applications at 4:00 on March the 1st. So, so, however y'all want to state the motion to do that.
Okay, so I make a motion that, to interview for the Building Inspector and City Judge, the entire council will be present. There will be a public meeting.
Mm-hmm.
We're extending the deadline for, to submit qualifications to March the 1st at 4:00 PM for all those wishing to apply.
That's fine.
Then we will set up interviews, and they'll be open, and everyone present.
Right.
For the positions.
That's fine. I have a motion. Any more discussion? Is made by Ms. Ledbetter. If no discussion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Duncan. Roll call vote, please.
Charles Cooper.
For.
Becky Duncan. Four. Jeanne Ledbetter. Four. Vanessa Matthews. Four. Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Four.
All four, none against.
Alright, motion passed. New business. Approval for the Gas Department to purchase a vacuum machine. And Scotty already gives the information at the workshop today. So if y'all have any more questions for Scotty? Alright, do I have a motion to approve?
I make the motion to approve.
Motion made by Ms. Pendergrass.
I'll take it.
Seconded by Mr. Cooper. Roll call vote, please.
Charles Cooper.
For.
Becky Duncan. Four. Jeanne Ledbetter. Four. Vanessa Matthews. Four. Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Four.
All four, none against.
Motion passes. If we want to do them another one first, or we want to do it after? A motion to approve the bills for January 2019?
The bills for January of 2019 is $698,157.07.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
I'll take it.
Motion by Ms. Duncan, and seconded by Ms. Cooper. Roll call vote, please.
Charles Cooper.
For.
Becky Duncan. Four. Jeanne Ledbetter. Four. Vanessa Matthews. Four. Elizabeth Pendergrass. Four. All four, none against.
Now, we have approval for the financial statements for January 2019. I wouldn't read them.
General Fund, $200,847.93. Water and Sewer Fund, $1,120,216.59. Gas Fund, $1,377,868.23. Grand total of $2,698,932.75.
Alright, do I have a motion to approve the financial statements for January?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made by Ms. Ledbetter. Any discussion?
Gail, on the financials, do you have, I mean, does that, that is just the checking account, correct?
Yes.
That's not everything. Is there any way you can break that down with everything for a true financial?
I'll get with Carolyn in a while.
Okay. That would be good if you could start doing that, and so we can know exactly where we stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Pender. Roll call vote, please.
Charles Cooper.
For.
Becky Duncan. Four. Jeanne Ledbetter. Four. Vanessa Matthews. Four. Elizabeth Pendergrass. Four. All four, none against.
Alright, we have two things we need to add to the agenda. One of those is my fault, but I forgot it. That was my fault. The first one is... Oh, I don't have it. Oh, the resolution from the Planning Commission, we handed out while ago, about parking. Resolution 931. There is the Jamestown Regional Planning Commission recognized that one of the functions and duties need to be in recommendation of Jamestown Board of Mayor and Aldermen, promote economic growth, community development in the city. And where is, it's long been recognized the city of Jamestown a vital part in the growth and development, promoting... growth and development and promotion of downtown realization, which often forms in the heart of the community and central business district. At the purpose of the goal of downtown realization is support the current business and encourage growth of new business, hereby creating a financial investment in job growth at the same time increasing tax base of the city without increasing the tax rate. Downtown realization involves several different facets, with two facets are ability to adequate parking, efficient ease of pedestrian traffic flows in downtown area. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Jamestown Regional Planning Commission recommends that the following actions concerning parking pedestrian traffic be taken in, taken by the Jamestown Board of Alderman, Alderman and Mayor and Alderman, I'll get right in a minute, for the purpose of utilizing redevelopment in downtown area acquire, buy, purchase lease and other agreements additional city operating, operated parking areas, erect signage and direction on sign information nature regarding ability to parking in downtown area, surface and resurface strip and eliminate both current and newly acquired areas designated parking places and improve current and or established new crosswalks in downtown Jamestown in areas of still pedestrian traffic. This is passed by the planning commission on December 19, 2018. Need a motion to add this to the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Ms. Duncan. Any discussion? If not, I need a second, please.
I'll take it.
Seconded by Mr. Cooper. Roll call, please.
Charles Cooper.
For.
Becky Duncan.
For.
Ginny Ledbetter.
For.
Vanessa Matthews.
For.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
For.
All four, none against.
And the second one was what? I make a motion to approve. It's a resolution 931.
I make the motion to approve.
Motion made by Ms. Pendergrass. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Duncan. Roll call vote, please.
Do we have a discussion first?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
Have a question.
Sorry.
The third paragraph, last sentence, I don't know if it belongs in here or not, but we don't know how we're going to do this. It says without increasing the tax rate.
That's a good question.
I don't know if it belongs in here. You know, we would like to do everything without increasing the tax rate, but I'm not sure that that's possible and we don't know what's going to happen, how we're going to make these things happen.
So you want to mark that part out or are you going to?
I would suggest that not be in there.
So you make the motion.
To amend.
To amend.
Vanessa might have a question as well. I don't know.
Well, are we going to focus on one of these recommendations? Or are we just to discuss these recommendations or all of, I mean?
Well, their thing is that they're wanting to get more parking. As far as the planning commission goes, they've been looking at other parkings and we've, they've looked at two or three places, but they're not coming, they're not coming in right now. The place beside right across from time after time, that lot behind the phone company right there, they got with them and they will not, they will not do anything. As I say right now, it's not going to be an immediate thing that's going to come up right now. It could down the road, but.
I make a motion that we at least pick one of these things that we might could focus on and send it back to the planning committee to see.
So what, which one would you, would make the motion we would do?
I know we had been discussing, we need this crosswalk signage bad for downtown.
Signage, mm-hmm.
Okay, the signage.
And you mentioned earlier the strapping.
Yeah, the strapping and the crosswalk signage. I think we could do that concurrent, though.
So let's say the strapping is in the third of one, two, three, four from the top. Is that right?
Could we not get better clarification on what we are going to focus on?
Well, like I said in the work session, I am going to work on strapping the courthouse and Walker right there next to walkers. That's already, I've already talked to, to Steve and Ricky at the street department about that and they're saying when it warms up, we're going to do that. Because they've not been strapped in, I don't know how many years. But that's already been my plan for a while.
So he's really got these bottom three in the works that he's in discussion about. So our main goal could be then to try to figure out what to purchase to create parking. Is that correct?
Because it says and illuminate, which means money and I don't know, I just think we need clarification on, I mean, and maybe this is just to get us going on this because we're, it's just the resolution, so.
Yeah. So what, what do y'all want to do? Do you want to, you just want to mark the part out or do you want to just pick out one part and keep it?
We amend and send back to the commission or?
Yes, it'd be sent back.
Recommend that we amend.
We can do that, can't we?
Does it go back to the planning committee?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, well, you want to send it back with the, to amend?
To amend.
Okay, all right. That's your motion.
I'll make the motion to send back resolution 931 to the planning commission to amend paragraph three and remove stating without increasing the tax rate and requesting clarification of priority for projects.
Is that the second one?
More specification.
Yeah, more specification.
Which one's that in, the second one or the last one?
Now all of it.
Oh, okay. Okay, all right. All right, I got Ms. Ledbetter make the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Matthews.
I have to rec, I have to withdraw that first motion.
Yes, we got to withdraw.
Because we have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, so we.
So I withdraw that motion.
Okay. Yeah.
Recent.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sorry.
Now we have the motion. Made by Ms. Ledbetter and seconded by Ms. Matthews. All right, ready? Roll call vote, please.
Charles Cooper.
For.
Becky Duncan.
For.
Ginny Ledbetter.
For.
Vanessa Matthews.
For.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
For.
All four, none against.
All right. And the last one we're going to add to the agenda is. Oh, yes. The sale of surplus cable equipment on govdeal.com. Like I said in the work session, we worked on getting the upstarts cleaned out and we got it done. But we have a lot of used equipment up there that somebody may want, so need a motion to be able to put it on govdeals and see what we can do.
Somebody inventoryed this?
Yes, it's already been checked.
I'll make the motion to put the surplus equipment.
Well, we got to make a motion to add it to the agenda first.
I'll make a motion to add the sale of the surplus equipment to the agenda.
Motion made by Ms. Ledbetter. Any more discussion? If not, I need a second, please.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Matthews. Roll call vote, please.
Charles Cooper.
For.
Becky Duncan.
For.
Ginny Ledbetter.
For.
Vanessa Matthews.
For.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
For.
All four, none against.
Now it's on the agenda, we need a motion to approve the sale of the cable equipment on govdeals. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Ms. Duncan. Any more discussion? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Ledbetter. Roll call vote, please.
Charles Cooper.
For.
Becky Duncan.
For.
Ginny Ledbetter.
For.
Vanessa Matthews.
For.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
For.
All four, none against.
That's it, ain't it? All right, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Ms. Duncan and seconded by Charles Cooper. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.